Good evening, everyone. My name is Nadia Zaim, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter of League Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. I would like to welcome you to our candidate forum for North Olmsted City Council Wards 1 and 2. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. That means that while the league provides nonpartisan candidate information for use by voters, including candidate forums such as this one, the league does not endorse or support specific candidates or parties. This forum is being recorded and will be posted on our Facebook and YouTube pages following the program. While we encourage you to share those links with others who are not able to attend tonight, please note this recording is the property of the league and no portion of this recording may be reproduced or used without our express written permission. Our moderator this evening is Janice Patterson. I will now turn it over to her to go over the guidelines and introduce our candidates.
Hello, welcome to our 2021 Candidate Forum for North Olmsted City Council Wards 1 and 2. Every four years, North Olmsted voters elect council members from four wards for four-year terms. This year, every board election is contested, and as Nadia pointed out, the election is nonpartisan. Tonight's candidates are Jeff Haug and Christopher Skarl competing for Ward 1 seat, and Chris Glasberne and Mike Held competing for the Ward 2 position. Here are the guidelines for tonight's forum. Each candidate will make a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. After all four opening statements, I will start presenting questions to the candidates. Candidates will have one minute for a response. League member Bruce Robinson is our timekeeper, and he will give the candidates 15-second and, well, 30-second and 15-second warnings. Opening statements will be made in alphabetical order by last name, and I'll reverse that order for the closing statements. Now, audience, is the time for you to start sending us questions for our consideration. Please use the question and answer feature that's at the bottom of your Zoom page to send us a question. All questions will be reviewed by a committee of league members for duplication, relevancy, and appropriateness before they're forwarded to me. In order to make sure that all the candidates have equal chances to go first and last, et cetera, I'm using a prepared grid to keep track of who I called on for what. I hope it works. All candidates, all of you, will answer the question, so there will be four answers to each question. Now, are there any questions from the candidates about how we're going to proceed? Good. Let's go. Now, for a two-minute opening statement, first, Ward 1 candidate Jeff Haug. He needs to unmute. There he goes.
Thank you, and I apologize for the slight delay earlier. I thought I clicked the right link, had the one that was direct to my email, so I, but needless to say, here we go. Good evening. My name is Jeff Haug, and I am a candidate for North Olmsted City Council Ward Number 1. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for setting up this candidate forum. I welcome this opportunity to earn your support, not only this evening, but on November 2. I believe North Olmsted City Council is at a very critical point in this upcoming election. We, as residents, have an opportunity to bring a fresh perspective to city council, a perspective that prioritizes residents versus playing politics with our safety, our money, and our future. There are several critical issues at stake, including Cleveland Water's Suburban Renewal Plan, critical vacancies within North Olmsted City Hall, a challenging and evolving retail environment, and that's just to name a few. As your city councilman, I believe my 25 years of experience in the business world would add to that fresh perspective. When my father moved us from the East Coast to North Olmsted in 1978, he saw then what a great community it was, safe for families, business-friendly, plenty of amenities, housing options, and engaged residents. Forty-plus years later, I believe North Olmsted still represents those values. However, city council must understand how critical their roles are, not only as we continue to emerge from a pandemic, but as the world around us changes more and much more quickly. Critical to act and seize opportunities, critical to work together, critical to bring value to the residents, critical to allow North Olmsted to keep pace with surrounding communities. As a director of purchasing, I understand what critical means. I understand how to listen and work with different perspectives and people, yet still have a positive outcome that supports progress. As your councilman, I will bring that experience and perspective to city council to ensure North Olmsted continues as a great community and city for years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Skarl.
Good evening, and thank you for having this forum for candidates. My name is Chris Skarl, and I'm running for North Olmsted City Council Ward 1. For most of my life, 45 years, I've benefited from living in and being to the city of 1977. I served as a youth sports leader, coaching, and refereeing for more than 30 years. Currently, I am the chairman of North Olmsted Recreation Commission for the past 12 years. My wife Jan and I have raised two sons here. She is a graduate of North Olmsted High School and is a 21-year employee with the city and is just as passionate as I am about the city and its future. Both of our boys are graduates of North Olmsted High School and have given back to the community and been very active with the youth in our city. My son Brett currently coaches the football team at the high school, and by the way, our football team's off to a great start. I'm proud to have the endorsements from the Democratic Party and many labor organizations throughout Northern Ohio. These endorsements come in part from recognition of more than 35 years of experience in elected leadership and management in the Heat and Frost Insulators Local 3 Cleveland. As business manager and local president, among other posts, I've made tough decisions on important issues such as pension solvency and strategic planning. I have demonstrated the capacity to work with people from a wide variety of perspectives. In office, my approach will be sober-minded and workmanlike. We need to make careful decisions to guide North Olmsted into the future. Seasoned thoughtful leadership is called for. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will go to our Ward 2 candidates. First, the incumbent in Ward 2, Chris Glasberne.
Thank you, Janice, and I'd like to thank the entire League of Women Voters as well. My wife and I are proud members of the league. Hello to everyone watching. My name is Chris Glasberne. I have served as your council member for Ward 2 since 2018. My wife and now 12-day-old daughter live on Fair Lawn, and I have been a resident of the city for 27 years. For 15 years, I have professionally worked at all levels of government, from the municipal all the way up to federal. I now run my own small business in North Olmsted and have done so for five years. I am committed to North Olmsted. As a council member, I have worked with my colleagues to help residents, and I have fought City Hall when Mayor Kennedy has done us harm. I will continue to be the financial watchdog of council and keep our elected officials honest. When the mayor tried to replace Buck Island with a gas station, I rallied council and our community to save it, and we did. When our safety forces needed face shields early in the pandemic, I rallied our community, and we made 15,000 face shields, not only filling the orders for North Olmsted Police, Fire, and EMS, but for every hospital, police, and EMS in Greater Cleveland. I lobbied Cuyahoga County for two years to get us money to repave Clegg Road, and we got that money. We are scheduled for repaving in 2024. I will keep fighting for residents. Once again, I thank the league for the opportunity to speak and look forward to earning your vote.
Thank you. Our second candidate for Ward 2, Michael Held.
Good evening, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. My name's Mike Held. I'm running for city council, Ward 2. Some of you may know me. I grew up in Ward 2 with my brother and sister. I was a graduate of St. Brendan's Grade School and a North Olmsted graduate. I chose to raise my five children here in Ward 2. The Hells have been in Ward 2 for the longest time. My father actually built one of the first homes on Deerfield Drive in 1965, and he worked as a firefighter and paramedic in Fairview Park on his off days. My dad was a builder, so we may have built one of the homes that you're living in right now, in Ward 2 or out in North Olmsted. I may have delivered the Cleveland Plain Dealer or the afternoon Cleveland Press to your house at one time also. I have an extensive business background in medical, sales, and marketing, and medical device sales. I love this community. I'm running for city council because I want to make up for some lost opportunities that the current city council has passed up on, such as Clegg Road, Gessner Road, Grace Road, the Cleveland Water Renewal Program. And I won't play politics on city council because I'm committed to the residents of Ward 2 in North Olmsted, and I'm committed to moving our city forward together. So I'm Mike Held, candidate for Ward 2 City Council, and I have a hope I can count on your support in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we will move to questions and answers, and in our one-hour session tonight, we probably have many more questions than we have answers. So as the moderator, I've taken the liberty to make some of the questions slightly more specific and shorter. So we will start now with the first question, and the first person to respond to this one should be, I would like it to be Mr. Haug. What is the most pressing, what is the most pressing issue in your ward? And what would you like to do about it?
Thank you, Janice. Yeah, I believe the most pressing issue is the Cleveland Water Renewal. Now, it affects not only my ward, but every resident of North Olmsted. And as we, as some of us know, we are already paying into this program today. And other communities such as Olmsted Falls, Rocky River, Fairview Park have already received close to $18 million in funding, while North Olmsted has missed out on $4 million of fundings. I believe that it's time to join this program because as we look at other areas of expenses of North Olmsted, this is one where we have an opportunity to bring in funding, and that allows us to fund other things that are critical and I know are on everyone's agenda. Okay, so it's not only, again, for Ward Number 1, and I may have stolen this from others, but I believe it's the most pressing for Ward 1 and for North Olmsted residents. Support Cleveland Water Renewal Program.
Mr. Skarl, the same question. What is the most pressing issue in Ward 1? And what would you like to do about this? You're muted.
Thank you. There's three service issues in Ward 1 in all of North Olmsted. It's power outages, flooding, and trash services. Power outages are a matter of service from our provider, FirstEnergy. If there is a systematic problem with service in North Olmsted, I'll look into this. Lou Bressard and I have already discussed this issue and will continue working with FirstEnergy reps to make the necessary upgrades to resolve these issues around the city and in my ward. Concerning flooding, we must keep moving forward with the EQ Basin Project. The work to date has showed an improvement with flooding in those areas, but many more areas remain to be done to help eliminate the flooding around the city. We also have a problem with trash and bulk pickup. We need to take a look at current contracts and possibly renegotiate or terminate and get a company in place to get the job done. Maybe bulk pickup isn't the way to go for just having it once a month. So we might need that to have twice a month. Thank you.
Mr. Glasberne, same question. One most pressing issue and what you want to do about it?
Well, I'd say that the most pressing issue for our ward, which is a almost entirely residential ward and predominantly houses in the 1,000 to 1,500 square feet range, is we need the city to be helpful instead of harmful. What I mean by that is we need to do things that proactively help seniors stay in their homes, proactively help residents repair their homes. We need to stop using our building inspection process as a way to generate tax revenue. It is not for that purpose. So that is what I'm looking for. I would like to see us instead do bulk purchasing programs, like the sidewalk replacement was supposed to be, where the city leverages its purchasing power for the benefit of the residents. Thanks.
Mr. Held, same question. What is the most pressing issue? And what would you like to do to address it?
Yeah, I definitely feel that the Cleveland Water Renewal Program is one of the most substantial things in this election here. I live on Gessner Road, and I feel that city council has missed a huge opportunity to get these drinking water lines replaced. So here are a couple of the facts. Gessner Road was flagged as having some of the oldest drinking water lines in the community, over 100 years old. I feel that one day is too long to continue to live with these drinking water lines. Here's the deal. All we need to do is repave Gessner Road after Cleveland Water invests $1.5 million in capital drinking water line replacements. We're already paying for these programs through our water rates. Okay, so we're paying for these programs right now through our water rates. And since 2012, Rocky River, Olmsted Falls, Fairview Park have received $18 million in new water lines. And you could say it's the expense of the North Olmsted residents paying that through their water rates.
Thank you, Mr. Held.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to second question. What, this is a question that I believe has come from one of our audience members. What, and I've shortened it a little bit, but what legislation do you think needs introduced, like, day one, if you should win this position? And Mr. Held, would you respond to that, please? You're muted.
I feel that one of the main things is hiring a safety and service director. We've gone on so long here in North Olmsted without a safety or service director. You know, in our fire department, our EMS, everybody is accountable to, you know, trying to make things better with the, with the safety and service. I mean, it is what it is, safety and service. It's critical to any city that you have a good safety and service director to handle whatever might come this way, especially during the COVID-19. So we're going to need somebody that's going to step up to the plate and protect North Olmsted through their safety and service. Thank you.
Mr. Haug, what do you believe needs to be introduced, like, day one?
That's a great question, Janice. And I think we have a lot of, or excuse me, from the audience. The, we have a lot of pressing issues right now, and I think the true question is what would be solved by legislation and what would be solved by other means? And one that is close to my heart and to a lot of people's hearts is involved, you know, the recent attack we had by proclaimed vicious dogs, you know. And, you know, having attended, you know, the recent city council meetings, we can see the passion in some of the folks related to this. Now, I'm not saying we immediately ban or take any of that route because I am a dog owner myself, and one of mine is a part pit bull, excuse me, a part rottweiler also. And the thought being that we have to have the right legislation that only our residents, but agrees with the county and state legislation because we can see there was definite confusion on what could be done.
Thank you. Mr. Skarl, what is your idea for legislation that needs to happen day one?
Well, day one for me is, and all due respect to my opponent, but I think there already is legislation in the process of making vicious dogs an ordinance and changing a lot of the ways that we've been doing business with the dogs. So my concern also is, I'd like to see two separate positions. Right now, safety and service is only one position, and I think that you have to get two qualified professionals for each one of those positions. We will come up with funding or make whatever budget moves we have to to make sure we can get two separate positions. And also, I want to see the police and fire, and even our city workers, get the tools, get the things that they need to be very productive. I believe our police, for instance, do not have camera, body cameras. I think in this day and age, it's a huge thing that they need to have, and I'll be pushing for everything like that that's going to help our city workers be more productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glasberne.
Thank you, Janice. Mr. Skarl is right. Legislation was passed on the vicious dogs at the most recent council meeting. Part of this question is you have to know what the timing is and what's going to happen in January. It appears likely that the federal government is going to pass some sort of very large stimulus. Right now, North Olmsted is not prepared to do shovel-ready projects, if you will. We don't have a master plan for what to do or what we want to try to do. That's what we need to be spending our time on for the rest of this year, not on bickering with the mayor and whatnot. That is what I would be focusing on and will be focusing on for the remainder of the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to a third question. This is a question, the kind of question that comes up in communities everywhere. It's, I'm asking it in sort of a globally way and then asking you to give a one-minute answer. If citizens believe that crime, vandalism, and even speeding are problems in North Olmsted, what do you believe that you, as a councilperson, can do to address a citizen's concern about that? Mr. Glasberne, would you go first, please?
Well, I will briefly mention first that I've been endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police and was chosen actually as their Citizen of the Year last year for what I did on the face shields. The reason is because we need to work with our police. We need to provide them the equipment and the staffing that they need to answer all of those calls. We also need to recognize that there are things proactively as a council we can do. We can do things that reduce crime. We can further work on trying to redevelop the motels that are repeat offenders for crime. Right now, the city administration doesn't want to touch those because they're revenue generators. If you're starting to notice a theme there, it's because there is one. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Held, same question. If crime, vandalism, and speeding are problems, what would you do as a councilperson to work on this issue?
So I would be proactive when we're talking about break-ins and vandalisms. You know, we need to echo what the police department's doing. We need to do our part, too. Lock your car doors. Don't leave valuables visible in your car. Targeted enforcement and additional police visibility is very important, and I'd like to explore opportunities to add lighting in some areas in this community that do not have lighting as of now. Thank you.
Mr. Haug, same question. What would you do as a councilperson about citizens' concerns of crime, vandalism, and speeding?
Yes, I think we all agree these are current issues affecting North Olmsted and surrounding communities. We see it continually. You know, we see these criminals getting smarter. You know, we see the level of intelligence they have, and I think this is where we have to use technology to our advantage. When we think about the enhancements in doorbell cameras and things of that nature. So what I think we're talking about is a community outreach to get the community to assist our police, you know, to say, hey, look, did anybody happen to have a video camera that caught so-and-so incident on this? I know that happens today, but to the level that it needs to happen, I don't think we're there. I also think there's small investments, such as, you know, the posted speed limits. You know, there's several of these in neighboring communities where it shows you how fast you're going. Those have proven to slow down drivers on certain roads. So with those investments and the community outreach, I think we can also help our police and help minimize the incidents.
Thank you. Moving to another question. There are some concerns that have been raised. I've been hearing some of them from, I don't live very near North Olmsted, but some things move around this end of the county pretty well. The issue at Clegg, Clegg Road at Maple Ridge Street. Most of you know more about that than I do since I don't live in your community. But what do you, what do you, as a candidate, believe is the best idea that you've seen yet for addressing that bottleneck point of Maple Ridge and Clegg? First, Mr. Skarl.
Thank you for that question. Being not that that's my ward, I do travel down there on Maple Ridge and Clegg quite often. I see it as a safety issue. I believe there's been studies done on that where they're supposed, talked about putting a third lane down the whole Clegg Road, and then they talked about just doing a turning lane. I'm not sure what the correct answer is, but once I'm elected to council, that will be one of my prime objectives, is to figure out what is the best safety protocol for that roadway. And whether it's a beacon, whether it is the turning lane, whatever it takes, that's what I'll be looking into. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glasberne.
Thank you, Janice. So Clegg Road is one of those issues that has been, a lot of misinformation has been going around. Ever since I've been elected, I've been pushing to repave and look at expanding Clegg Road if that needed to be the case. I lobbied the county and the mayor for two years and finally got the county to give us the money to repave Clegg Road, and that will happen in 2024. When I kept pushing the issue, the mayor tried to do as little as possible and went out for a safety grant. He used our taxpayer dollars to hire one of the other candidates to do a study. And that study said, in order to reduce traffic, you have to have a third lane. That seems to be what we need to look at, and that's what I will continue to advocate.
Thank you. Mr. Held, what would you do? What do you think needs to happen with the Maple Ridge-Clegg intersection?
Yes, there has been a great deal of talk. It's been a big issue, and there may be a lot of misinformation out there. But this is what the facts are. It's another missed opportunity for the current city council. So this is called a corridor study, Clegg Road Corridor Study. So it was a study that was created by experts for Maple and Clegg Road Corridor. You can't believe how many accidents are on that road north of Clegg Road, north of Lorraine. The public wanted widening to improve traffic, safety, and the cross-
The public wanted widening to improve traffic, safety in the crosswalk beacon on Clegg. The administration was ready to move forward with the upgrades on Clegg Road that was advised by the results of the corridor study. In 2020, city council tabled these improvements. There was $500,000 available and city council passed on it. Now, eight months later, city council wants to move forward with parts of this study on Clegg Road. And the biggest thing is they want to stick the pack, the taxpayers, um, with the bill.
Mr. Haug, what is your idea about that intersection, Maple Ridge and Clegg?
Uh, yes, and I'm happy to pick up where, uh, Mr. Held left off. Uh, as you mentioned, there was a formal study done in October of 2020 that was published in October of 2020. And one very clear distinction we have to make is that Mr. Alejandro Shock, who is running for council, was not a candidate at that time. I have to be very clear on that. And that was not, there was no reason to believe otherwise, and that's can be proven. But the real thing is that it recommended a turning lane at Maple Ridge. Okay? It also recommended a pedestrian walkway with a beacon that can be notified when, when a walker needs to cross Clegg. So these are things, this is out on the website, you know, this, this study is out there and council decided to pass on it. But it said, look, we need a third, we need a turning lane at Maple Ridge and we need this crosswalk. Okay? It's too dangerous for a third lane like we have on the south side of Clegg. So this is documented, and for whatever reason, council chose not to take the expert advice. So I think when we ask what should be done, I think we have to refer to the experts. And that was a study done by a very legitimate consulting company. And I believe, you know, and this one is close to my heart, you know, because I actually, though I am in Ward One, I am on the border of Ward One and Ward Two. And actually just today, I ran by that entire corridor and I see the challenges on that. I see the dangers there. So I do hope that we move forward on Clegg Road.
Thank you. We are doing quite well on our timeframe here and we're going to switch, switch gears just a little bit. We probably have time for two more questions, and I have more questions coming to me than there are, uh, in that, going to be allotted in that time. So I'm picking one that, um, is, it seems to come up between city, between candidates, among candidates all the time. And it's a little different from some of the nuts and bolts ones that we've been talking about. So the question candidates is, what ways can the city council work with, in partnership with the city school board? Would you please respond to that first, Mr. Haug?
Yes, I would love to. Cause that's one, uh, like my opponent, you know, we are intertwined these days with the, the school system from the sports. And also I have three children in the Maple School, Middle School and High School. So I think this is, you know, very relevant as it is to a lot of parents out there. But the way we work together is I believe with a shared resources. Okay? There's a lot of resources between the city and the schools, not only for sports, but for a lot of different extracurricular activities, a lot of different, um, preschool and, you know, post-school that's needed, you know, for, for children. And so I think the answer is, is we have to merge our resources together and have an honest discussion. And I'll give you a real example, you know, so third and fourth grade and fifth and sixth grade football need to use the high school field for their home field for their games. So that's the rec center, you know, working closely with the athletic director. So I think things like that, where you take a look, where do we have shared resources that we can better utilize for our community?
Thank you. Mr. Skarl, what are your ideas about the school board and the city council working together? You're muted.
Okay, now, yes, thank you. Being on the Rec Commission Chairman for 12 years, I've worked very closely with the schools and our city. We need to keep a good relationship with them. For 30 years, like I said in my opening statement, I've been around school kids. They're all grown up now and we have a lot of resources at the schools. And I believe I was one of the first that started our fifth and sixth grade program to having our football games played up at the high school. Even before the turf was there, we played on wet, muddy grass field up there. But that's just one part of it. If the school decides to start closing some of these smaller elementary schools, we need to be on board as the city council, our new, our administration, and make sure that we use these for after-school daycare, um, theater, basketball, whatever it takes to make sure that these resources are going to help our residents.
Thank you very much. Mr. Glassburn, what ideas do you have about school board and city council working together?
So, uh, eight years ago, uh, the then school board president ran for mayor against Mayor Kennedy. Ever since then, uh, Mayor Kennedy has had a very frosty relationship with the schools. When the schools built the new middle school and high school, uh, the city charged over a million dollars in permitting fees. That's not the kind of thing we need to be doing. That's the kind of thing we need to be avoiding. What Mr. Skarl said at the end there, though, is what we need to be looking at the future. The schools are looking at consolidating to a couple of elementary schools. That means there is going to be three, four, five parcels of land in our city that are going to need to be redeveloped, and the schools might even need our assistance to get land to build those new facilities whenever that time comes. We need to be ready and able to assist to make sure that the schools get to where they need to be and that those parcels of land are productively used. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Harold, what ideas do you have for school board and city council relationships?
Yeah, I think it's imperative that the school board and city council work together. And especially this post-COVID, the pandemic. In the last debate, Spruce School was mentioned, that it's vacant, and what would we do with something like that? I think city council should work with, um, the school board and make some type of community center, some after-school program, um, for kids where they could come, maybe shoot some hoops, have some physical activity, but have everybody inclusive, an all-inclusive, diverse after-school program, where we'd even have people that would be providing tutoring and help for these students. Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting many questions, uh, that relate to the water, uh, water line renewal situation. I, we've talked about that a little bit. I'm going to skip over those and I'm going to tell my fellow league members that that's probably something we should do a league forum on for the community at some point. And it's a, I, in my read, it's a little unfair to ask people who haven't been sitting in a council seat for a while to, to deal with the details of that, because it's obviously quite a challenging thing. Let's go to some, one more question. What could be done to attract more businesses to North Olmstead? Mr. Held. You're muted, Mr. Held. Okay, there you are. What would you do to attract more businesses?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do in this, um, unique time, the COVID-19 has really changed how business is done in North Olmstead and throughout the world, actually. The first thing is we need a, uh, economic development expert. Someone who is a forward thinker and able to adapt to any changes such as doing business after COVID. Now, we used to have, um, somebody in this position and city council has removed our economic development manager, which I think is kind of crazy, because this is the same person that was instrumental in keeping all of the mom jobs here instead of them going to Westlake. Secondly, location, location, location. We have a great location here in North Olmstead. We're near the airport, I-480, the Ohio Turnpike. We have plenty of hotels. We have a $90 million school bringing new homeowners and businesses. I say, why not keep your business in North Olmstead?
Thank you. Mr. Haug, what would you, uh, what do you propose about attracting businesses? What do you think council can do?
Yeah, I strongly agree with my, uh, Mr. Held over there, you know, my neighbor in Ward Two. But, you know, there are things, I was thinking about this a lot recently, and, you know, Mike is dead straight. You know, we get the economic development manager back, okay? In whatever form, you know, we have to decide if that's a part-time or a full-time job. You know, we also, you know, need to really stress and emphasize what North Olmstead brings to the table. And I also thought of something very interesting recently. The biggest challenge is facing a lot of industry, especially retail and restaurants, is worker availability, the employees. A lot of focus is on the customers, you know, the product, the sales, but we see it up and down the rain road. Who's not hiring? I ask you that question. So what I say is we have to not only emphasize, you know, the availability to bring customers in, but also bring workers in. Okay? You know, and that we do by our, our transit system. You know, we do by our, our reach within a 10-mile radius of population. You know, we look at demographics, you know, that people that are going to be the employees at these, you, you saw it today. The new BW3s had a hiring tent out there, because everybody needs employees. So we also have to focus on that along with the customers and the sales and the revenue and the location.
Mr. Skarl, what can you add to this conversation about what will attract businesses? Mr. Skarl. You're muted.
Okay, North Olmstead is an integral part of Northeastern Ohio's economy. We are in proximity to an international airport. We have major rail and road transportation hubs. What made Cleveland the best location in the nation in the 20th century actually makes North Olmstead an incredibly attractive option for many kinds of businesses in the 21st century. The economy is in the midst of a massive transformation. New computer-based technology is changing how work is done, what kinds of jobs and where. Our city is going to have to deal over the course of the next decade with these changes. Our teachers will need to teach new subjects in new ways. Our public services will need to incorporate new technology in a smart way. And the employers who locate their operations in North Olmstead will be changing how they operate. We need a full-time economic professional to be able to get us into the field of attracting new businesses and to support the businesses that are here and making sure they can make a mainstay in our city. In these situations, we need city leadership that has the vision to be able to come to terms with these challenges. Thank you.
Mr. Glassburn, what do you think can be, what can be done sooner rather than later to attract businesses?
Well, thank you. Um, so I can tell you what has happened. Councilwoman Heeman and myself and a number of council members put together a small business relief program early in the pandemic, uh, early, uh, actually for months, almost nine months. The city administration didn't believe the pandemic was a real issue and just wanted to wait it out. We did a program of grants and Councilwoman Heeman and I and Council President Jones went door-to-door to all the businesses. And we get youth them applications, want to make sure they knew about it. And we asked them, you know, how's it been with the city? None of them had ever met our economic development professional, the part-time guy. So I'd say the first thing we need to do is show up for work. The second thing we need to do is actually be helpful. The only interaction that these businesses had had with the city were when they had inspectors coming and usually giving recommendations or fines. That can't be the only touch point with the city. We need a positive touch point working with businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're ready to move to opening statements. We're running a little long on time that we said we would do. So if you have slightly less than two minutes, please shorten your speeches. And we will first go for closing remarks from Mr. Held.
Thank you. And once again, I'd like to thank the viewers, the participants, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. Um, I'm really excited about the opportunity to run for city council Ward Two. I think there's a great deal of work that needs to be done. We have this Cleveland Water that we need to get these drinking lines for. We need to fix Clegg Road. We need to get a safety and service director. You know, we need an economic development person, a full-time person to help propel us into the future and make North Olmstead, um, an even better city than what it is right now. My name's Mike Held and I'm Ward Two Council. And I hope I can count on you, the voters, in November. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Held. Mr. Glassburn. Two minutes, please.
Thank you, Janice. Uh, when I first ran for Ward Two, Mayor Kennedy was ordering his ward sweep in Ward Two and residents were being ordered to replace driveways at 30 days' notice. Over a third of the ward residents were given a choice of spend about tens of thousands of dollars on a driveway or else. Unfortunately, that or else also extended to sidewalks and other home exterior repair or improvement issues. Citizens being cited en masse is wrong. Citing residents to generate revenue is wrong. It's a backhanded tax increase. When Mayor Kennedy tried to raise North Olmstead property taxes to the highest level on the west side twice, I have fought it and it has been stopped. Friends, it's not enough just to stop bad things. Our economy is changing. North Olmstead needs to evolve. We are falling behind and it's going to take proactive leadership that works together to make our future bright. I strongly encourage all residents to support Nicole Daly-Jones for mayor as someone who council and our city can get actual proactive work from. And I ask for your vote on city council in Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skarl, your closing statement, please.
Thank you, Janice, and, um, thank you for the League of Women Voters, my opponent and the other candidates in Ward Two. We need a change in city government in North Olmstead. We have serious issues confronting us. We are going to need all of city government, the mayor, the council and other staffers to work together for the good of the whole community. We shouldn't get down in the weeds or play politics with questions about city services. We should have a professional orientation to running this city. City Service Department should have an excellent working relation, working relationship with council and the mayor's office. I can guarantee you that I will have that kind of a relationship with police, the fire and all of city workers. Then it will be possible for all of us to work together on economic development issues. The choice in this election is between a clear new voice or the old politics of accusing. That is what city politics have devolved into on the Cleveland Water issue. I want us to get out of that pit. Working with Nicole Daly-Jones as our new mayor and the rest of council, we are going to restore confidence in all of city government for North Olmstead. Once again, my name is Chris Skarl and I'm a candidate for North Olmstead City Council Ward One, and I'm asking for your support on November 2nd, 2021. Thank you for being part of this forum and I wish you all a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skarl. Now, Mr. Haug, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Yeah, I think, um, my fellow candidates, my opponent, you know, uh, said it best, you know, we, we do want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity, you know, and for the audience for attending and listening. Uh, we heard a lot of important issues discussed this evening. We also heard some very different perspectives and positions on those issues. I would challenge all of you to question where you stand as a resident on those issues. And when you do that, how does your view line up with the recent actions of those on city council? And do we accept the status quo of current city councils stating that starting on this new term, they now have a plan and will act differently for all these They now have a plan and will act differently for all these challenges we heard about this evening. I invested in North Olmstead. I was raised in the city. I got my first job in the city, Danny Boy Farm Market, for those of you that remember that great place. I graduated from high school in the city. I built a home in this city, and now my wife and I are raising our three boys in this city. I am excited about the opportunities North Olmstead has moving forward. But we need people on council that can seize those opportunities. We can't afford to get bogged down in politics and personal agendas, as my opponent said. We need to prioritize the residents' best interests. We need to bring in available external resources and funding to allocate North Olmstead funds to things like that on the master plan. I'm confident my experience will add to that fresh perspective we need on city council. I'm ready to work for you, the residents, on day one. I hope you can support me and current mayor Kevin Kennedy on November 2nd. And once again, my name is Jeff Haug, candidate for North Olmstead City Council, Ward Number One. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, candidates. I am always admiring people who think that they want to do this much hard work on behalf of the city that they live in. And so we, we've seen good examples from, from your, the fervor that you have about some of these issues, and thank you very much. We're very pleased to have an audience, because the league is a little new at doing these kind of programs. And, uh, the last check here, we've had over 40 people with us right now. And we already know we've had almost 150 people watch the Ward Three and Four, one that was just last week. So we could have pretty big numbers by the time we get around to election time. And what we can't see on screen are all the league members that work behind the scenes to make these things happen. We're a two-city league, Westlake and North Olmstead. So we're doing four candidate forums for North, uh, Olmstead. And somebody help me, two, three for Westlake. And that's, uh, takes a lot of people and a lot of production, and we're learning a lot as we go. We're making democracy work by working all together and, and, and laboring in these fields and thinking about how our cities. And our country can work better. I will remind everybody that the voter registration, uh, deadline for the November 2nd election is October 4. So those of you who are with us tonight still have a few, um, days that you can take care of. Changes of address, uh, asking for, uh, actually registering. And if you want to be able to vote at home this year, you have to ask for a ballot, a mail-in ballot. And you need to go to the Board of Elections website to get those directions. There are several ways to do it, so they're kind of complicated directions. The League of Women Voters has another resource for voters this year. It's a national Vote 411 site, and it will go live on October 5. And it's a good place to see more answers to questions for those candidates that chose to respond. And issues, and, uh, sometimes people even like to browse at what's going on in other cities and what their issues are. There are a number of issues we did not touch tonight. Uh, one of them, I knew was going to be there, and it did in fact come, and it's flooding. And we didn't have time to talk about that, but it's a lively city that has this many issues that we could bring forth. As, and I think that there will be opportunities that we can work with city council and, and the league. And maybe help citizens get more information about that as we go. Let other people know about this forum and that they can go and look at it day or night, uh, on the League of Women Voters website. Now, that's sort of a mystery for people to find by itself, and I think right after I close. Uh, there'll be a slide that shows people how to get to some of these other resources. And if nothing else, just put League of Women Voters, Cleveland in your browser. And something will come up that'll be useful for you to get to the forums or other information. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, Janice, and thank you to all of our candidates for, um, joining us this evening and for participating. As Janice says, uh, said, uh, on the slide, it's on the screen, we have our upcoming forums. We have on October 7th, next Thursday, our candidate forum for North Olmstead Mayor and City Council President. Then October 19th, North Olmstead Board of Education. Um, and I also did post in the chat the links to both our Facebook page and our YouTube page where the recording will be. After, uh, after we finish tonight, so please feel free to share that link with, with others who may be interested. Thank you, everyone.